Those light things today at Leisure Services, if that's okay?
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Okay, do you need more lights?
We have some, but if you have something you'd like to add to the float, we'd be happy to put it on there.
Madam Mayor, we are live, it is nine oh two.
Thank you. Of course, waited till I took a bite of my.
I didn't see.
Yeah, well, thanks very much, I appreciate it.
Anytime, happy to help.
I know who you are, it's really wonderful, it's heartwarming, especially in this holiday season. Good morning, everyone. I saw that, well, you won the, you won the second runner up as the.
Yeah, the Palm Beach clerks have their holiday meeting today, so.
Oh, well, the other day.
As Vice President, because the president's out of town. Anyway, Madam Mayor, it is nine oh three and we are live.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the City of Lake Worth Beach Agenda Meeting for December thirteenth, Friday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Betty Rush.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sarah Maliga is absent. Commissioner Christopher McVoy.
Here.
Commissioner Mimi May.
Here.
Commissioner Reynaldo Diaz.
Here.
Great. Chris, you have to leave early, is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, I'm actually missing out on, I'm at a meeting that includes the mayor of Miami-Dade County. And she's speaking at the moment, so I'm gonna keep it very short. So I do have to drop off, but. If it would be possible, I would like to ask, in light of the situation with the beach. And the dredging and our charter and so on, I think it would be helpful if one of my colleagues who voted for the. Offer to allow them to use her beach, if they would ask that that vote be brought back on Tuesday, the seventeenth. And that we re-vote against it to be in line with our charter.
You need to talk, you need to talk to Jamie about that. We, there's that, yeah, there's no action that we need to take. I understand what your point is, but talk to Jamie.
Well, I, I have done that. I do, I'm, I'm making this as a formal request to, because only the folks who voted for it. Can bring it back for a vote to turn it off. I think in the long, in the big picture, it would be wise for us to do that, and that's why.
You're missing the point, you're missing the point.
No, I'm not missing a point, I'm, I'm very sorry.
Christopher, can I finish? Christopher, can I finish? Our vote, because, well, it, it, have you talked to, have you talked to. Jamie about the statute from the way back that nullifies actually the referendum that was done in two thousand and nine?
I haven't heard anything about that.
That's why, please, that's why I'm saying, I don't want to waste a lot of time today, that's because you have to go. So I am saying, our vote is null. But in fact, the referendum may be null. We have a bit of a conundrum, a legal conundrum going on here, and. I would suggest that today, if, that you speak with Jamie, and he will explain to you just how deep this little thing goes.
Um, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, Elizabeth is trying to connect, so she should be on any minute.
Yeah, I just, I just sent her a message, because I saw she wasn't on here, so.
Okay. What I, we, for the past few meetings, what we've been doing is sort of, you know, chatting and bringing up stuff that we're interested in. We've sort of got away, you know, we started these out as agenda meetings and talking about the agenda, and I think there's room for what we have been doing, and also what I'm. What we're, Jamie and I have been talking. We haven't really talked specifically about agenda, so as you notice, there's some staff here today. So this is what I'd like to do, because a lot of times, you know, questions come up at a meeting that could be handled here. If we have the opportunity to do that. So this morning, we've got staff here, and I certainly have some questions about the agenda. So that we can address them and not do, you know, and, and do it in a place which is a little more constructive than when we're voting. So with that, I'm gonna start, and. I am, so. In terms of the agenda for the seventeenth, I've got my agenda book in front of me, and I do, there are some things on the. Agenda that I really do have some questions about, that I would like to ask Mr. Waters about. So I would start with, and I'm going, I'm starting from the beginning of the new, you know, public hearings. The first one is the turf. And I see that we have a, an item here dealing with artificial grass, which is of course a hot topic in Lake Worth. And I'm glad that we have some guidelines from it, and I appreciate that. I just had one question about that. When it talks about. In areas, in all areas of installation, artificial turf shall be treated as impervious surface, great. No more than ten percent of the allowed impervious surface may be used for artificial turf. That's my, that's where my question comes in. Why ten, I mean, I understand you can't see it from the road, but why limit it to ten percent if it's impervious anyway?
Well, the way understood from the direction that was given at our discussion, I'm not remembering how far along ago. That there was not a, a interest in having the entirety of the impervious surface area of. A lot or property to be covered in artificial turf, so we. Discussed it within staff, worked with Dave McGree before he left, talked about it, and decided that an appropriate number to recommend would be that we would allow ten percent. Of the impervious surface area allowed on a property to be artificial turf. If you wish it to be higher, that will be fine. It needs to be a quantifiable number, though.
Can I, just, can you make, make sense, like on a general property, William, what that looks like? Like if I have, let's say, one of the single lot properties, what percent of my property needs to be impervious? And then ten percent of that would really be, square footage wise, how much? I know, that's why I'm asking.
Not a needs to, it's an allowed to be.
No, I understand that.
So like, in every zoning district, the allowable impermeable surface number is different. It's also based on whether you have a large lot, a medium lot, or a small lot. So in a single-family residential district. As an example, a small lot has, which is. Allows impermeable surface, sixty percent of that lot can be impermeable surface. A small lot, by definition, is less than forty-nine hundred and ninety-nine square feet. So if we just round it up to five thousand square feet, we allow up to three thousand square feet to be impermeable surface. Which also includes the footprint of the building. So on that lot, ten percent of that would be three hundred square feet of. Artificial turf will be allowed, which is thirty by ten.
In a small lot.
On a small lot, and then it goes up commensurately, and then the percentage that's allowed to be impermeable on a larger lot is less. It goes down to fifty-five for a medium lot. Into fifty percent for a larger lot, but the ten percent would be static across all lot sizes.
Is there a limit on other types of impervious surface besides this one?
No, we, whatever is impervious is impervious. Now, granted, there are different types, but the, the overall limit is a sixty percent for that small lot.
Right, but it could be any of the impervious surface materials. They're not designated, like you can have ten percent rock. And you can have ten percent cement, and you can, you know what I mean? Like, we're trying to do it this. I just don't know that we need to have a specific. Percent if there isn't one for any other type of impervious surface.
So what you're saying is all, if, without a number, the entirety of the impermeable surface that's not associated with a building. Conceivably could be artificial turf, and that's not the direction that we've understood coming from the commission.
Right, and I'm just asking the question, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mayor, but I would just wanted to clarify.
No, no, please, anybody ask, well, that's why we're here.
Yeah, I mean, I have.
And we do allow impermeable surface in the front yard.
Oh, well, yeah, but I mean, we've already decided that turf isn't going in the front, like, I'm not arguing that. I want to hear from other people, like, do you think it's, it's. Like, kind of prejudice towards turf to make that the only impervious surface that we have a limit on? Other than the just general impervious surface limit?
Who are you asking that question of?
Anybody that wants to answer it. I mean, Reynaldo and the mayor and McVoy, because they're the ones that are gonna vote.
Will you repeat the question?
The question is, so right now, all over the impervious surfaces that are available. You can pick which one you want, if you want to have sixty percent of your lot, or fifty-five or fifty percent of your lot, depending on the size of your lot, be impervious. But if your choice of impervious surface is turf, you're only allowed ten percent. If your choice is gravel or cement, you can do sixty percent.
So that the public is, the impermeable surface number also is inclusive of the building. And the building lot coverage has a limit as well. And so, like, on a small lot, the maximum lot coverage for all buildings is forty percent, leaving. A maximum area of impermeable surface is twenty percent of a lot. So if you're.
And then ten percent of that is tiny.
Pardon?
Ten percent of the twenty percent left.
Still, ten percent of the allowable impermeable surface is not changed, it's still six, sixty percent of your lot can be impermeable surface.
Oh, it's, oh, okay, it's not of the remaining impervious surface.
Of the total.
The house is taking up, but, but remember, the house is taking up most of the impervious surface.
I see, okay, that makes sense, okay, but I, I.
I, I don't see why, I, I, I'm kind of on the line with you, Mimi, about, you know, you can make it all concrete, which isn't loving, it's hot. Or, I mean, if it's impervious, it's impervious, is kind of how I see it.
That's kind of what I was thinking too, but I want to hear from Reynaldo and McVoy.
Reynaldo, I see your hands up.
Yeah, so just to clarify for everyone, the ten percent, is that ten percent of. The total impermeable surface, or ten percent of impermeable surface minus the building, if there is one?
It's ten percent of the allowable impermeable servers, regardless of what impermeable surface type that is.
Right, which is pretty substantial when you think about it, because it's not like we're saying, you know, if you have a. Hundred square foot driveway, and ten percent of that is the artificial turf. That would be kind of what I think we talked about in the other meeting, which is limiting the use to having like. When you have a concrete driveway and you have like the, I don't know, you'd call it like the striping.
No, that's different, we're not talking about that part, we're talking about in the backyard.
I know, I'm using, I'm using that as an example, that can be done in the back as well. But we were talking about doing like really limited uses of them, of artificial turf. Which I still am in the camp of not allowing it, because honestly, the reason why, you know, to use your words. Commissioner May, is it prejudiced against artificial turf? Well, yes, because it's a known pollutant, right? We're not talking about pea gravel or concrete, we're talking about a plastic that is loaded with PFAS and other contand- contaminants. That we are working hard to remove from our water, and so that's why it would have a far more restricted use. Than, say, a concrete driveway, or pea gravel, or, you know, any of the other. Impermeable services, surfaces, that's, that's why I thought we were considering, or talking about. You know, limiting the use even more, because it's not apples to apples, it's, you're comparing a concrete driveway. Which arguably isn't, isn't pheno, or, but, you know, concrete surface, right? Like pool decking, or whatever you want to call it, whatever it's gonna be used for, which arguably isn't, isn't phenomenal for the environment. Either, but it's also not plastic, right? Or, you know, if the alternative is rolling out in a giant sheet of plastic. To cover your backyard, that is the, was the concern, right?
Doesn't the, doesn't the artificial turf, Reynaldo, allow some, it's not completely impervious?
Well, no, it, it's, it's considered, so the issue with it, if it's not. Sorry, Aldo is doing his toddler thing. So, does water go through. Artificial turf, sort of. The reason why I believe it's classed, and maybe William has a better answer for this or explanation. The reason why it's classified as impervious is because the material itself, if you hold up like a sheet of that material and spray water. Through, water will go through it, but what makes it impervious is the preparation of the land underneath it. Which is gonna be impacted, compacted really hard, so that you get that nice, you know, that level. I always describe it as like a golf green, that's kind of like the look that you're looking for with artificial turf. In order to get that nice, not lumpy level surface, you really have to compact the, the sand or the stuff underneath it. And that's what becomes impervious. So the material itself might allow water through, but the stu, the land underneath it is gonna be compacted nice and hard.
But it will absorb some water, I mean, it's, it's not gonna run off, it's gonna.
No, it does run off, because if the soil is compacted, it might as well be a sheet of plastic or concrete, right? And because that's all concrete is, it's basically compacted, you know, sand, or whatever you want to call that material, and. And so, and the other concern is, is because it is plastic, you know, plastic breaks down in the sun. And the more it's exposed in the sun, the more it releases microplastics and nanoparticles into. Our streets, you know, through the runoff and into the storm drain, into our water bodies. That's why I thought we talked about having a stricter limitation on that as an impermeable surface compared to the other options.
And the new.
I mean, I'm looking here, there are tur, there is turf available that claims to be PFAS free.
Yeah, they, they claim that, and then, you know, and then five years down the road, there's another lawsuit that there's another pollutant. The bottom line is, it's plastic, right? Plastic is plastic, and, and generally speaking, we're trying to get away from. Any kind of plastic, they're all petroleum products.
Well, yeah, except for both the other boards passed it, so clearly, you know, not everybody's thinking that we need to ban it.
Well, this isn't a bad, all right. It would be helpful if we could have like a diagram of what that would be. You know, maybe over the weekend, or some time between now and Tuesday, William, you could do a couple sketches of what. The amount of grass, of, of artificial turf would be on a single-family twenty-five foot, you know, just to give us an idea. And then we can talk about it more at the meeting, but at least now we have the beginning of that conversation.
Diagram that shows a, a ten by thirty-foot area on a lot?
You can put it that way, you can also put it in a way that is, here's a twenty-five foot lot, here's a fifty foot lot, here's the, yeah. A, a little, a little diagram would be helpful, just a.
Okay.
Little lines.
Yeah, to see the, to see the size comparison to the house, to the land, to the, I'd like to see that too.
Because most of the people, the people that were coming up and about having it, were talking about play areas for their kids and, you know, dog areas.
And that's the number, that's how we arrived at ten percent, in the sense that, what could be, what is the minimum area? That's needed like for a dog run, or a, or an appropriate little play area. So when we ran all the numbers. We came up with ten percent, even on the smallest lot, allows for an area that's sufficient for a dog run, or for a playground. That might have a swing set or something, but we can try to pull something together, I, I don't know who I'm gonna get to do it, but we'll try to figure out something.
Just, I mean, if you, I mean, as you were, as you were going over this, I'm sure, you know, there were some sort of. Notes or visual or something that would just be helpful, because this, as you know, this is a very hot topic, and I want to be able to present to the public. Why we're doing what we're doing, whether it's ten percent, or twenty percent, or fifty percent, or whatever. So that would be helpful. I think it would be helpful for everyone. So, and we can certainly talk about it more, and at least we know now, here's an issue that we're gonna be talking about on, on Tuesday. And we all have Monday, you know, you can, we can always talk to staff on Monday and Tuesday as well. So my second one is the ordinance eighteen about the definitions of. Of, of townhomes. And we're, I, I really, I don't know where this is coming from, why we would change this from three to two. I mean, two attached units in my world is a duplex.
Precisely, and right now, if somebody would like to build a two-unit complex, like two-unit building. And sell each side out as affordable housing, we do not have a mechanism to do that. And we've had several court requests, not only in the CRA area, but also other areas of the city, that if I have a fifty-foot lot that allows a duplex. How can I build a residential property such that I can sell off each side to an independent party? So it has to be on a lot of record. Well, we don't allow lots of record to be created for a duplex, but we do for townhouses. So that's why this is being brought forward. If you do not wish to move forward with it, that's perfectly fine. There will be quite a number of, then the, the only other option, and it, and it presents a financial issue. For financing is they would have to create those projects as condominiums, where there's a common area element that owns all of the land. And the person who wants to buy either portion of the duplex can only own the interior portion. So we were trying to facilitate a mechanism to have it be easier for, let's say, if Habitat for Humanity would like to build. A two-unit project somewhere in the CRA area. And be able to sell each part of it to an individual, and they would have each have a lot of record, some portion of land. And it keeps the maintenance. Management of the building issue far more simple, if it's a townhouse versus if it's a condominium.
This came out of Sunset Property, I think, there was some talk.
No, it didn't, it came out of a two-request for developing properties on federal highway.
Okay, well, then, and, you know, I, I am, I hear you're, you know, a little impatient in your voice, but. You know, some of the terms that it just used might be helpful to explain, in terms of, if there's a duplex on the property. Let's say it's a fifty-foot lot, and there are two units on it. I'm trying, or, but, the.
I think the difference is, one, one person owns the property and rents out the other side.
A duplex is a single residential building with two units, it's under a single ownership.
Right.
Right.
But a town, if you call that then a townhouse, you still have common area to deal with, don't you?
Right, but, but, what, it does facilitate that the portion of the building that's with one unit. And the portion of the building that was with the other unit can sit on its own lot of record, so you could have. Non-common area elements, or you could, say you built a side-by-side twenty-foot wide unit. Overall forty feet, with five feet on each side on a fifty-foot lot, each person could own half of the property.
So we'd be dividing lots into twelve and a half feet, or whatever.
No, they'd be divided into, if it's a fifty-foot lot.
No, twenty foot, all right, you're right.
But there is, there is a potential too, where a twenty-five foot lot could have units back to back. I don't think anybody's gonna build a twelve, a, a ten-foot wide unit, never know, but, and then they can split it from back to back. In such a way that, you know, half of the property, say the front half is owned by one person, the back half is owned by another person. But our code doesn't facilitate the subdivision or lots of record for duplex. Only under a townhouse or a single-family residential property.
Has Joan had input on this?
Yes, Joan has been, I'm apprised of it, and it's one of the things that came out of also the change that you made not that long ago. That allowed each lot of record in the CRA to have one additional unit if it were affordable. There is, and then there's been a big push that the affordable residential units be available for ownership versus lease. Well, if you build three units or two units on a property, the only way to do that is it be a townhouse. And we have a lot of fifty-foot lots that would now be able to have two units, and a lot of twenty-five foot lots. That would now be able to have two units, and the only way for two individuals to own each portion of their, or each residence, when it's two. Is to set it up as a townhouse, which our code is not allowed right now.
This wouldn't be waiving lot size, would it?
The minimum lot size does not change, no. Also, a townhouse, the creation of a townhouse does require conditional land use approval over for the planning and zoning board. Or the HRPB, so before any of these are created anywhere, it will be a board hearing.
And it would be in what zoning district?
Single-family, two-family, fourteen and up. The preponderance of where there's interest in it is single-family, two-family, fourteen. And single-family, I mean, and multifamily twenty.
So when, so you would be having townhomes in a single-family district?
We already allow a duplex in a single-family, two-family, fourteen district. This would allow that duplex to be owned by two different people. We do not allow multifamily or more than one unit in single-family residential. Which is about forty percent of the city.
All right, well, that answers a lot of questions. Thank you. I don't, I really just needed to know why we're doing this and what the heck.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner Diaz has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, Reynaldo.
And Commissioner May's trying to, but she doesn't know how.
It's under reactions if you're using your phone.
On the bottom is a hand, is a little hand.
I know, but I'm not, I'm not there at that screen, I don't know.
I will, we'll do Reynaldo first, then we'll do you, we'll, we'll.
All right, just assume my hands up.
A virtual hand, just keep your hand.
There you go.
If you're using your phone, it's under the reactions, Commissioner May, but.
I, I know, but I'm not.
It's still, oh, that's not popping up for you, I got you, yeah. So, back to that last one, so, so we, we do allow duplex and single-family, but that's owner occupied.
I don't want to confuse public, we allow us duplex in a single-family, two-family, fourteen. And single-family residential, we do not allow duplexes.
Okay, because, you know, it. I feel like there's a lot of discussion that we're gonna have to do, this is obviously pre-agenda, and this isn't where we shouldn't have this discussion, but. I feel like we're gonna need a lot of explanation, because there's going to be. You know, I just think back about our ADU effort a little while back, where, you know. People, quite frankly, in our community, and in a lot of these neighborhoods, do not want density in their neighborhoods. I think it's a, it softens the blow when it's owner occupied, so, and, you know, when, when it's a duplex, typically one. The owner lives in one of the units, right? Generally, maybe not always. And I think that kind of softens the blow on, on people accepting that sort of, that sort of arrangement, I think. I, like the mayor, it seems like we have a lot of the same. The effect and why this was brought up.
These could be attached units, William?
They don't necessar, well, they do have to be attached if they're gonna fall into the townhouse, yes.
Ooh, so there's no setback in the middle. So, just as.
I was just gonna say, it, it seems like for all description, it, it's essentially, it will look like a duplex, it's, we're just changing the ownership. It's, yeah.
Mimi? So regardless of what the issue is in this ordinance. My problem is the wording of it. If you look at ordinance A, it specifically says that we're creating a definition of artificial turf. If you look at ordinance C, it says we're adopting the city's mobility plan. If you look at B, it says housekeeping and minor changes for clarity. So in my mind, you're moving paragraphs, you're adding a comma, you're not doing, you're not changing the definition of anything. If it's minor changes in housekeeping. So I really am adamant that this needs to be changed, so that it says. Amending the LDRs to change the definition of townhouses, because if you're, if you're. Either somebody who doesn't do their homework, or general public who's just reading through this agenda, you have no idea that that's what this is about. And I'm having a hard, hard, hard time with that.
The, so the title would be a more like, to address, it's really just ownership, I mean, like Reynaldo just pointed out, it's.
But it's a big deal, because i- if we change this thing, it does allow, if we zone single-family, two-family over at Sunset. It does affect Sunset. They will be able to have these duplex, or these townhouses that are two units instead of three. So, it is a bit. No, they can't do, no, if you, if you zone, if we zone single-family, two-family, fourteen. Then you could have these, the two, the duplex that are, that are owned by two different people. And I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm saying the title's deceiving.
Well, if you had, if you did that route with Sunset, you could have duplexes that are rented out to two different individuals as well.
Okay, but regardless of it, the, do you guys see what my, my point here is not about what, what it says in the thing, it says that. My problem is the title of the ordinance.
From the staff report, if you read the ordinance itself, it's got quite a bit more. If you would like us to put the entire ordinance title as a title for the staff report, we can easily do that.
No, but look at the, William, look at the, hold on, look at the agenda, the agenda for A. Tells you that it says artificial turf, the agenda for B tells you it's a mobility plan. Ordinance just says several housekeeping items and minor changes for clarity, that's not enough.
Okay, and then we, if you would like, we can, if you look at the entire title of the ordinance, which is the first part of the ordinance itself, which is the attachment. It goes into, it doesn't talk about townhouses, but does, you know, it talks about Article One, Division Two, we can put that as a title. The preference in the past.
No, I don't want all the legal ease, I want to be able to read that as a General Joe Schmo and know that we're talking about. No, I don't want all the legal ease. I want to be able to read that as a General Joe Schmo and know that we're talking about.
Something just saying what it's gonna be.
Just said, but for clarity, this ordinance is more than just about townhouses.
Okay, well, that's, that needs to be in there. I just don't think it's, it's clear.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a, it's a really solid point because um. If, if I may, if I may, Commissioner May, uh, it seems like.
You may.
What you're, I, I mean, and I, and I agree with you that. The way it is described in the memo and on the agenda, it seems innocuous, right? It's housekeeping. We're just, oh, we realize that if we organize it this way, it'll be better. This is a substantive change. It's not just housekeeping. It's not like changing typo or ordering. So the description of which. On the agenda in a memo should reflect that it's a far more substantive change than.
And if there's more than, yeah, and if there's more than just the um changing in the definition of townhouses, I'd like that to be in the, in the.
It's three things. I mean, it's, it's one, this one item is actually three separate.
So is your preference for us to pull it from the seventeenth and bring it back and readvertise it for this ju, January?
I would prefer that because I don't think that it's clear.
There's no rush on this. There's no um.
No, there's no rush right now on that. Well, there, there is, there is a gentleman who would like to build a house. A, a duplex for he and his son in the historic district um on M Street. Um, and he's waiting for this, but I mean, I don't think another month is gonna.
Right, and if, I mean, if they do build it as a duplex, I mean, and we change the ordinance, they could, they could change it. They could own, they could change what they're, they're doing there.
Well, by the time it gets to the, the HRPB, maybe there will be a decision and we can just um adjust, because they will have to. There is a conditional use required for the townhouse, which would not have gone before the board yet. But I, I'll get with Scott and Annie to see if, how much that person's affected.
I don't, I don't wanna, I don't want to be. I, I mean, I, I appreciate a citizen's request, but I think that one person wanting something does not make it time sensitive.
Well, it came up not just for them, but we were already trying to figure out how to deal with some of the issues. With a um preference to have ownership options for affordable housing versus just rental. When it came to lots that can only have two units on them and the only option would be um to create a townhouse on those parts. We already have some semblance of them. With the adoptive family duplexes that are on, there's one on H and there's one, and I, those were approved before I got here and I'm not quite sure how they. Um, they might have done it through a variance or there may be a land lease involved that you don't actually own the whole property. I can't, I don't really know. Um, but we were trying to facilitate an, an ease for a smaller developer or um habitat for humanity or. Housing ren, um culture Renaissance to do ownership options on limited sized parcels.
Right, and I don't have any problem with us debating that, discussing it and everything. I just think that the way that it's written is deceiving.
Plus, the next one is Exhibit C, which is um.
Tells you what we're doing.
No, no, it doesn't actually. It's, it's just part of the, it's the next exhibit on this ordinance. Um, I'm not talking about, there's three parts to this ordinance, to this ordinance. The first one was that, the second one is increasing. Uh, limiting, decreasing, increasing the density. Um, on the west side of Dixie Highway going from thirteen thousand square feet to sixty-five hundred square feet. Um, and going from twenty-one seventy-six to fourteen five oh two. Where, what, what, why are we doing this?
Um, because when the code was written in thirteen, we had a difference in the minimum lot sizes between the east and the west sides of Dixie. Uh, but that uh has held back quite a bit of investment on the west side of Dixie. So we're making the minimum lot size on both sides the same.
Well, east side.
Again, and I don't think that's housekeeping. That's literally changing of ordinance, like our LDR.
Well, all of the ordinances are changing the LDRs.
Right, but at least you know what it's doing in the title.
Alright, let's, let's, east side of Dixie is sixty-five hundred square feet. West side of Dixie used to be larger.
At least thirteen thousand, I believe.
Right, and it goes down to sixty-five hundred.
So we're making them the same.
And that's the uses permitted by right. Okay, um, alright, I mean, that's just trying to, again, it's word, just because we asked doesn't mean we're, you know, we just need to ask. So. Making the east side and the west side equal. Anybody got a problem with that, that you can think of right now? Um, so if not, that's, we'll move on. The next one is the, the next page exhibit. There's no exhibit number, but it has to do in this tiny little printing. Um, which is really, for my old eyes, hard to see. Um. Adding, can you, the next one, which is the nursing homes and things like that, what, tell us about that, if you would.
I'm sorry, I lost you for a minute. This is, this is still part of the same ordinance?
Well, yeah, the next, the Exhibit C has the lot size and the next page has tiny little print. Twenty-three point three dash use tables, uses, and it's like miniscule.
It's not great how it's attached.
It doesn't even talk about what it is.
Well, and we, we've had to make some adjustments because we've had some uses that have been routinely just. Thrown into other assisted living, retirement center or nursing home. And we're now, we're now grouping them all together as one entity versus having them be individualized on their permitted use table. And then clarifying how they are approved, which is through a conditional land use. We had, we had two separate uses. We had assisted living centers and facilities as one use. And we had her nursing homes and facilities as another use and permitted use in, from a use table. Both went through the same approval process. Um, so we, to make it things easier, and since they're essentially a very similar to the same thing, we made them one type of use. And then clarified where they would be allowed. And we did allow them, um, decided it was appropriate to allow them in more areas. And where they were allowed before. The, the uh minimum lot size requirements and the performance requirements. Associated with both uses have remained the same.
I mean, if you look at, interestingly enough, to Mimi's point, the last, the other side of that page. Is the um October thirtieth um agenda item for the P and Z and HRPB. Which actually goes into a little bit of what these are about, which would have been helpful if we, we had the same thing. Do you know what I'm talking about, William?
Well, was not all of this provided to you as part of the agenda? I don't know if it's not.
The last page, it's the last, it's on the other side of that, and if it would have been. That's after we go through the whole thing going, what's this about, what's this about? And they go, oh wait, use table, creating a high, I mean, there it is. But if it had been in the, in your cover letter like you did to the planning and zoning board, Mimi's question would have been answered. Mimi wouldn't have had that problem, because here it is.
I don't think it's even Mimi having the problem. I don't.
No, 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 it's just, it, I'm looking at this, which is on the last page after you've slogged through everything, try to figure out what it is. And this one is, talks about use tables, talks about, you know, so it's a little bit easier to, to look at. Okay, so we're not changing anything. We're just changing definitions of it, William. Is that the point?
And we are also allowing the nursing homes and assisted living centers in the uh. Multifamily forty and one other district that uh is where residential occurs. But again, the performance or criteria associated with developing in the minimum lot size. And those types of aspects are remaining exactly the same.
Okay, I mean, I have a nursing home in my neighborhood that you would not know that they were there. It's four stories tall. It's right, I mean, it's right there. And so I don't, I don't really have a problem with this because we need, we're, we're gonna be needing more of these facilities. So, um, if, if it.
We don't have to pull it, just change the name of the ordinance so that it says, you know.
Okay, the way it's advertised is based on the name of the ordinance. So for the one that's got the townhouses, which has these other two things. Um, to be totally kosher and above board, we're gonna have to pull it. Readvertise it for the first meeting in January with a new title. Um, Melissa has graciously um provided some text that I think we can work with very well, and then we'll bring it back.
That sounds good to me.
Madam Mayor, I have a question. William, when you advertise the ordinance, don't you advertise the title on the ordinance?
We do, but that seems, that doesn't seem to be enough. So I don't know.
But I'm sorry, Commissioner May, weren't you asking that the title on the agenda be changed?
Yes, yes, yes. Correct, not the thing that goes in the paper. The thing that, the, the people don't read the background. They read the agenda. And if they're reading this, they're gonna say, oh, they're moving paragraphs around, big deal. And that's not what's happening.
So, so we can't really change that title before the seventeenth, which is on Tuesday. So.
Today, after this meeting.
Will that, will that be enough? Because it's Friday now.
Just, it's just the on the agenda. Where it says amending multiple sections of chapter twenty-three LDRs. To address the definition of townhouses, the definition of nursing home facilities and the lot size on the west side of federal. Boom. Then it tells you what's in it.
I, I was under the impression that you, you wanted to give the public a little more notice than having this swap out today and the meetings on Tuesday. If, if you're okay with that, I can work with, Melissa's already off, provided that option and that's fine.
Yeah, I'm okay with that because I, I think that, I don't think we're gonna have a lot of. I mean, it's up to you guys, but I think that it was just the clarity of the agendas and going forward, make sure that if it's housekeeping, it's literally just grammar and moving paragraphs.
Yeah, I mean, there are some, yeah. I don't have a problem either way. Honestly.
Okay, so I could swap out the staff report because I revised it to add the three changes in the title on the staff report.
And the agenda.
On the agenda.
Yeah, to make it look more like the one that the P and Z board got.
I would be okay with that.
Alright.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you, Melissa.
You're welcome.
I have one more thing, Mayor, when you have a sec. Um, and this is kind of to, to, it's kind of to Melissa, but all of us. So when we change the. Um, way that things get on the agenda, presentations and whatnot to have a consensus. We didn't necessarily think about the fact that we have things that just kind of roll over each year. And I think that if, I think we need to put the same constraints on that as well. And what, what brought this up is the Highland, um, the Highland presentation. I was there last year when they asked. They come in, they ask for money for safety patrol, which is completely fine. Barton and South Grade and um North Grade might want the same thing, but. If we're gonna put a presentation on, I think that it should be brought up at pre-agenda or at least get the, the um consensus like we did before. It can't just be, oh, we did it last year, we're doing it this year. Especially when we have different commissioners.
Well, I mean, Allen Elementary School trip is pretty non-controversial.
It's not about controversial. It's just about making the agreement that we made with each other. And then having it on without having that agreement. Uh, it's not like, and it's also not like they're giving a report about something really cool happening at Highland. They're coming asking for money. Which I get that they need, but so does Barton, so does South Grade. They all want to go to DC.
Right, well.
So my, my, I, I mean, I, I'm not trying to be like a Scrooge because I think that it's an important ask and we should help our elementary schools go to DC. That's not the point. My thing is if we're gonna put it on as a presentation, it should be agreed upon in consensus, by consensus.
Like Martin Luther King Day, or, I mean, do we have to do that every year? Or Gay Pride, do we have to do that every year?
Yeah. I kind of think so. If we made it before, or are you saying just new things that go on? I don't know. What do you, I'm, I'm, I'm done not talking.
Well, I want to read what we said before I comment. You know, I'm gonna go back and see what we. Uh, from.
Mayor, this, William, I'm, before we leave the LDRs, may I bring up another item that's been pressing. Um, to both Jamie and myself as well as Melissa. Um, regarding the batch plant um item that was voted down at the last meeting. The batch plant provisions of the LDRs that were voted down at the last meeting under first reading. Um, where the staff report was not presented and there was a, a potential applicant in the audience. Who wanted to speak but did not put in a blue card. Um, you do, if you're open to it, have the opportunity at this meeting coming up to um. Vote to reconsider that item and have us readvertise it for January. Uh, the entity that's interested in the batch plant application, uh, believe may have. Reached out to some of you, if not all of you, as well as Jamie, and asked that, um, they at least be allowed to be heard. Um, and so I'm just putting that out there that if. Uh, I believe Mr. Diaz was the second on that um motion, but it was unanimously voted down not to move forward. Uh, if you're open to putting an item on the seventeenth to vote to reconsider that item. At a date to be set in January.
The only person that could do that would be somebody, would be a commissioner or, or me.
Right.
Why would you do that? Because he didn't get a chance to talk?
The basis for the not denial, as I heard, was that we didn't want batch plants next to residential. And there is a provision in the proposed language that has a minimum distance separation between that use. And the residential that exists as a non-conformity in the um IPo. Well, since we weren't, didn't present the basis of the ordinance. It was immediately voted down. Um, the person interested in bringing forth an application. Uh, wanted to know had that ever happened before, and I did not, in my recollection, have one. And they've reached out to City Attorney's Office, they've reached out to Jamie, I believe they've reached out to some of you, I don't know. And so I was just putting it out there that if you're in, uh, open to hearing the staff presentation. And their issues related to the batch plant, uh, you could vote to reconsider it and then we was. And we could schedule it either for the first or the second hearing, a second meeting in January. If you're not interested in doing that, I will forward that information to the batch plant people.
I mean, we read the proposed ordinance. I mean, anybody else want to bring it back? I mean, if he wants to go up for three minutes, not agenda, and say why, you know, plead his case, but. I don't, I don't see bringing it back. We, it was pretty soundly rejected. Anybody else? I mean, Sarah and Chris aren't here, but.
Alright, I'll let them know they could say something under unintended items then.
And Ronaldo, did they reach out to you? They did not reach out to Mimi or I, I don't think. Mimi, did anybody?
No, no.
I don't think so, not yet, or at least if they're playing on it. I tend to, uh, well, I did a quick check, um, using my phone for the meeting, but um, I. I, I think I agree with you, but this does, I, you know, it does put us in a tough spot, but also like if they were there. And didn't fill out a blue card. We couldn't have known that, um, right? I mean, it's, they had an opportunity, I think. I don't know. I feel like we should discuss this with our managers and legal um before considering that.
Well, I think it has to be at the following, the next meeting.
Yeah.
Which, no, which would have to be somebody on Tuesday would have to do it. To, to have a reconsideration, right, Melissa?
Right.
Yes, that's correct, and they flew in from out of town.
And nobody, we had no idea who he was.
And they didn't know they had to fill out a blue card, so it was poor communication all around.
Well. I don't think, I mean. I don't, I, asphalt batch plants are, you know, we. So I'm, I'm not hearing anybody say I'll bring it back at the next meeting. I'm not going to.
But we do allow batch plants and asphalt facilities in the Parker Commerce now. It's just we don't have performance standards for them and they are very limited in the provisions. Such that it is highly unlikely we're gonna get another one. Um, just so people are aware that, you know, we, it, this isn't, wasn't gonna be a new use. It was gonna um better define what those uses could be, how the equipment is um dealt with, the height of the batch plant. Um, because they're kind of tall, uh, how the sustainable bonus would apply and some other things. But we do have a batch plant already in the Parker Commerce, a existing non-conforming one, and then another one. Uh, we don't have any asphalt plant, but they, there is a way to get them in the Parker Commerce. It's just not very easy, which is fine, and I would likely won't get another one uh based on the provisions that we, we do have in place. This is providing, was proposing provide a great deal more clarity on those uses, how they could happen. Uh, but if there isn't any interest in bringing it back, I, I will be more than happy to pass that on to. Um, the applicant and uh their representative.
Well, I, I don't have it obviously in front of me, but I'd like to see what the agenda item said, um, you know. The, the staff report said about that, with that, they were in itself, Ronaldo?
That brings up, yeah, thank you. That, that brings up a, an interesting point, just in, in general, and um. And I don't think we need to have, this is probably not the, you know, the place to have a hearty discussion on it, but maybe it's something to consider in a future meeting, which is. Um. You know, we have a restrictive L V R, which is intentional. And then if an applicant comes in and wants less restriction, so we immediately consider changing the ordinance. Why is that the default as opposed to, hey, I have this nonconforming thing? How about I go for variance? Like, why, why do we shy away from the variance process so much?
You can only get a variance if it's not self-imposed, or you have a unique hardship. The biggest issue with this was that the batch plants have towers, that whole concrete aggregate, that are taller than thirty feet. And our code, anything that's taller than thirty feet falls under the Sustainable Bonus Incentive Program. We don't have anything in our code how to calculate that, or how to determine what is the max height for that apparatus to be. And so, right now, even though a batch plant, in theory, could be allowed, you can't get the equipment under the code, because there are no provisions for it.
So it limits how many batch plants we're gonna have.
Well, technically, you probably never get another one, because I don't know the batch plant that has the uh, mixing facility that all sits below thirty feet.
All right. Well. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. I don't see any. Burning desire to revive it.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Thanks for your time this morning. Um, mobility plan, we've all reading it, slogging through the pages of the mobility plan. Oh, wait, what's this? Wait, add one more. Um. Hold on one second.
Uh, while you're looking, can I have anybody else add in about the um. Proclamations and presentations? About what you brought up.
I think it's, um, the issue with that is it, it could be a slippery slope. I mean, we've been on this call for fifty five minutes now. And I think if we review every, every proclamation that is, including the ones we do every year. Um, it could be a little tedious, right? So maybe there's a better way, maybe it warrants discussion. But um, but maybe not getting approval for every single one, because then I feel like. And maybe that's the intention, maybe it would drastically cut back on the amount of proclamations we do, but um. But, you know, I think there's a discussion to be had there.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Just so you know, for January, the only proclamation is for Martin Luther King Day.
Okay.
Um, and what we have been doing is, if there is not anyone there to receive the proclamation, it's on consent, so it's not read.
Right.
You know, it's just there for people to see and know that the city's acknowledging whatever is being proclaimed or recognized.
Oh, God. Um. Yeah, okay, well, can we, can we revisit this, Mimi? Because we're really short on time.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, the next one is the mobility plan, and I, um. I had a couple, I'm not, you know, I'm almost through it, but I just had a couple of things about. When we taught the list of, to include cycling east, you know, scooters, golf carts, improving roofs. Um. I don't see shared rides or like. Um. Circuit, I mean, it's, it's a minor thing. Maybe I can ask William about it. Tomorrow, Monday, um. Shared, on the definitions, um, I just thought we might in, include a couple more.
Oh, well, there, there will be likely, we will be bringing back to you later some changes to the L D Rs. Um, this is a change, the comprehensive plan, which normally doesn't have those broad definitions. And um, some of that clarity, I think you're gonna see there, because we are gonna be broadening, like how we did with parking. How, what kind of benefits we give to various projects based on mobility um, issues. And so they have helped prepare for us already preliminarily, um, some changes to the L D Rs, which will be, we're bringing back once the comp plan process is finished.
Right, I was just looking for those, those things to be included in the ordinance. Shared rides.
We will have a representative there, and we can definitely add some of that stuff between the first reading, then it goes to the state for review. If we need some tweaking here and there, we can definitely.
I gotta go.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
All right, now we can't hold it.
Sorry, the bell rang.
The bell rang. We live in Mimi's bell.
Don't forget about the holiday parade tomorrow.
See you tomorrow.
I won't.
Okay, um, okay, so we, can we still, can we still talk?
Do you have a quorum?
We don't have a quorum, but we're not, we're not gonna vote on anything.
Elizabeth. Madam City Attorney.
Good morning, everybody. Yes, you can still talk. You cannot uh, come to consensus on anything or, or vote on anything. It is.
Had a question, so I just, that's, and then I'm done. Uh, my question was. Uh, starting on line three ten, the city should cooperate with Palm Beach County to initiate a program to capture roadway impact fees generated from development. I just didn't know what it meant, if, if. If you can explain it.
That language is probably gonna be changing a little bit. Um. We have, we, the county contested our comp plan changes, because we were gonna hope, hope to move forward. To replace the roadway impact fee with our mobility fee, which they contested. So we have changed the language that we will be working toward adopting a mobility fee. Uh, we will deal with the county's impact fee roadway money under a separate um. Uh, activity later, but um, we are gonna be. Actively trying to get the county to spend more of its impact collection within the city of Lake Worth Beach, because thus far, it's not been very much. There was a lawsuit that established, I mean, the county established these regions where the impact fee money that's collected in that region can be spent in that region. But the region that Lake Worth Beach falls in runs from Lake Worth Beach all the way basically to, to Pahokee. And so, and it was deemed okay, that the rational nexus was sufficient, that as long as the money collected in that region. Was spent in that region, it was okay. But the perbon度 of the money, like ninety five, ninety eight percent of it. That's collected in Lake Worth Beach is not spent in Lake Worth Beach.
Right.
It's spent other places, and um, there are a number of municipalities that have an issue with that, though the regional approach the county has taken. Uh. Was deemed legally sufficient. The county is working on a new transportation plan. Uh, again, our concern is that it's mostly focused on building roadway capacity from vehicles. Not for other forms of mobility, like pedestrians, shared rides, mass transit, light rail, bus transit, golf carts. And so, um, our roadway right aways are basically built out. Uh, I think there's a provision to widen Tenth Avenue to six lanes with this, a turn lane in the middle, and that's about it. And improving the intersection, which is already being happening, is already happening, will happen again at Tenth Avenue. And there will be some work at some point at Sixth Avenue South. But besides that, that's the limit of how much our capacity for cars could be improved. Um, but there are a wide variety of mobility mechanisms to improve overall capacity and transportation. If other means of transportation other than a car are considered.
Okay, thank you. I just, you're curious about, you know, these things come to us, and you have all the background and the knowledge, and we just need to. Learn a little bit more. Okay, thank you.
Well, likely, we will be having some kind of workshop sometime second um, quarter of next year. Um, to talk about transportation and what the T P A has been talking about, and some other things that have been perking along that um, would affect us. Improving or implementing our mobility plan. And keep in mind too, our mobility plan serves two purposes, is also our roadway safety plan. And we intentionally did that to try to sort of like, kill two birds with one stone by incorporating the both, both of them. To have the required documents in place, that if we found grant opportunities to help with either one, we could go after those.
Okay, thank you. Um, it's very helpful. This is Jamie, I'm, thank you. This is very, you know, this, we've got, you know, I wish we could have these, like. Because it's a chance for us to talk, and it's really interesting to hear different perspectives and, and learn from the staff, which. Spends a lot of time on this stuff, and we don't treat it lightly. Jamie, are you gonna be around a little later? Or?
Me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got a, uh, an eleven thirty, and I've got ten o'clock right now, but I'll be around after.
Okay. All right, I'll give you a ring or drop by or something.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Have a great weekend, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.